To get their feedback. And then we'll take all of that information and we'll have another planning meeting in July, early July, to come back and present a recommendation based upon that. So again, we're trying to get a lot of information. What we're going to do tonight, I'm going to turn the mic over to Scott here in a second. He's going to walk through the presentation that we have. And then we're going to, at the conclusion of the presentation, we're going to hand out comment cards and pens, so that we could get any questions or comments about the presentation or about any of the schemes specifically. We'll gather those and then we'll read them and then we'll answer those questions or comments at the very end. So that's what we're going to do tonight. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Scott this thing.
Thank you, John. Is this all? Go. Can you hear? Okay. Very good. Thank you. It's wonderful to be here to talk to you about a few ideas for West University's Civic Center. You know, it's very rare that a community sort of takes the step of trying to look at the whole list of vision for what the heart of a community could be. Could is the operative word if there's so many opportunities. So we've put together three ideas that we want to share with you this evening about the Civic Center itself, as well as about streets that define the Civic Center. And I'm going to try to keep it as brief as possible. There's a lot to say, but I'll try to keep it as brief as possible. So there was a wonderful citizen survey that was conducted that is a wonderful roadmap for us to use from a planning perspective. And the most important planned improvements based on the survey responses were consolidating new buildings to create green space, more trees, more efficient parking, traffic calming measures to improve pedestrian safety, enhanced crosswalks for children, sports, et cetera, wider sidewalks and pedestrian areas, more grassy areas, more passive areas for relaxing and visiting, community gathering spaces for community events, and then a few folks who of course thought, well, it's very unimportant. But this is a wonderful roadmap for us as planners. And really what I think we're doing here is the act of place making. And you could think of place making as turning spaces into places that are comfortable, accessible, social, and livable. And that's what we hope to transform, the spaces that we have within the Civic Center into a place. And so we begin to think about, well, what are the design principles that want to be followed as we think about how do we create this place for West University? And a few come to mind, really built upon this survey. Walkable, safe streets, critically important. The idea that streets don't have to be just places where cars move or park. They can be complete streets. They can be great for pedestrians. They can be wonderful for automobiles, fire circulation, emergency circulation. They can do all of those things, particularly in a context like West University. That there's the opportunity to create beautiful green spaces that people enjoy or are attracted to on a regular basis. We think there's great opportunities to introduce green infrastructure ideas within the Civic Center. You know, it rains here sometimes. Anything we can do to soak up water, in whole water, is a good thing, not to mention energy. Opportunities for community gathering should be identified. And we think this is a real opportunity and really a generational opportunity to think about how we define the identity of West University and express its culture. That could be in the form of cultural events, arts, or just architecture and design. And I have to thank Lauren for this wonderful image, but I think this teaches a great lesson. That when we're thinking about a civic space like this, two things come to mind. One is sort of simplicity, which usually leads to timelessness. Whatever happens, whatever we do, it's probably going to be here for generations to come. And how people will use this space in 2050 is probably way different than how they'll use it in 2025. So being simple, being timeless is pretty important. We've tried to be as smart as possible about the site, which is a very interesting, a very interesting site. And the focus of our study, sort of defined by this graphic, is Rice Boulevard on the north, College on the west, University on the south, and on the east, with some wonderful existing facilities. Of course, the municipal building, the West University Baptist Church, the youth center of the church. We have water tanks that really need to remain, and the existing community center library and senior center. There's also this incredible patchwork of ownership. You know, I must admit, when we first sort of saw this, Jeff and everyone shared the ownership map, we were like, oh my God, this is, this is going to be complicated. But actually, when you start thinking about it, it's a wonderful thing. And, you know, if you're trying to create a vibrant civic center, there's nothing better than having people on the site as many days of the week as possible, as many hours of the day as possible. So the fact that there's residents that live adjacent to the site, not only within it, but around it, the fact that there's a church and its associated facilities, city facilities, it's all a very wonderful thing. Circulation, vehicular circulation is two-way, as everybody knows, with Milton and Amherst being the exception. Currently, Milton is one-way, East Palestine, and Amherst one-way, West Palestine. Parking, there's on-street parking. Some of it's parallel, some of it's head-in or angled. There's about 224 existing parking spaces in the Civic Center. There's off-street parking, some that belongs to the church, some that belongs to the city. The off-street parking that belongs to the city is 68 spaces. So within the Civic Center itself, parking that's owned by the city or that happens on city land totals 292. So then we start to think about place making concepts. And this is sort of a brief diagram. For those that are sitting in the back, I apologize, it's probably unreadable, but I'll try to read it for you. So the process that we're employing here is community engagement, which has happened. The town hall meeting in the middle of May was a good beginning of that, to review the citizen survey. Since then, we've been working on conceptual alternatives to establish sort of a framework for a civic space for you all to input on, which is what we're doing here this evening. From that input, we'll define two, three, one, whatever seems to be the community's preference, one of these options into a master plan, and then that will be refined into the final plan.
So can you back for that for one second? So this is the council workshop on Monday, the 24th, and then the final meeting, which is another council presentation, which is on July 8th. So those are the three different, the other meetings that are coming down project.
Thanks. So the first set of ideas I'd like to talk about are related to streets. You know, the streets of the Civic Center have the opportunity to be pretty wonderful places that meet the objectives of the citizen survey and the design principles that we just outlined. We think there's a series of sort of street typologies we could begin to think about. We believe Oden could be a beautiful park street, you know, not unlike Edlow, where we can introduce angle parking into the street, as well as maintain traffic, widen sidewalks. I'll show you more about that in a moment. Amherst and Milton, we believe, can become complete streets. They become human environments, not necessarily just places to be parked. I'll show you more about that in a moment. College, we sort of refer to as a people street, and we'll talk about the details of that in a moment. Rice and University, we think, can also become very walkable streets, just through simple actions of widened sidewalks, trees for shade, and light for public safety. And then there's also the opportunity to rethink the intersections within the Civic Center as traffic calming devices and enhance crosswalks and intersections to accomplish that. So this is sort of a diagram of how those typologies might be applied in the Civic Center. And so Oden, we think of as a park street from university to Rice, Amherst and Milton as complete streets, College as a people street, then Rice and University as walkable streets by widened sidewalks and trees and things, and then intersection improvements that serve as a traffic calming device at these locations. So let's talk about ideas for Oden, the park street. So the notion here, staying, using the 60-foot right-of-way that we have, is to maintain a nice wide sidewalk along the park edge of 10 feet, introduce angle parking, parallel parking, so we increase capacity, and resulting green spaces becoming by the retention planters to absorb runoff. We would then have one lane northbound and one lane southbound, and a widened sidewalk on the west side of Oden along with the green space, and of course, a drop-off opportunity at the front doors of the church. And then sidewalks that become an extension of the Oden, of the Amherst and Milton complete streets that bring people over to a direct connection to the park. We'll talk more about that in just a second. So these streets, the new street, would sort of look like this in relationship to the existing street. So the existing street is... There we go, sorry. So the existing street is 45 feet of street paving, 12 feet of the parkway space between the curb and the right-of-way line on the school side, and 13 feet of green space on the church side. So within that 16-foot right-of-way, we just reshape it a little bit. We can have a southbound lane of 11 feet standard lane width, and then a northbound lane of 13 feet, which is a recommended back-out distance for angle parking. Angle parking along the east side of Oden, a very generous sidewalk that allows people to bike, run, walk, and the preservation of existing trees, of course, would be critical. Then on the west side, we'd have a 9.2-foot-wide parkway with a 6-foot sidewalk. The existing sidewalk is 40, and a green space as a place for trees and lights and other amenities to live. There's another option that we've considered, which is if it's possible to attain about a 10-foot easement from HISD, it would allow us to create a little bit wider, a little bit wider... There we go. All right. A little bit wider sidewalk on the west side of Oden, the church side of Oden, 8 feet wide, and a little bit wider lane on the northbound side for angle parking to move in and out. Just an option to consider. So the second idea is to sort of transform Amherst and Milton into complete streets. These would be curbless streets, hopefully paved, sidewalks and streets would all be paved. So there'd be sort of slow traffic on those two streets, just through texture and materiality. And the plan for that would look something like this. This is the, this is Amherst on the south side of the church. So there would be angle parking on the church side of Amherst for convenience and also to create space for opportunities like the drop-off that happens on the south side of the church. And then an 8-foot sidewalk. The street width itself would be 20 feet, and then we'd have a very generous promenade on the opposite side that would be about 12.2 feet wide. Within that promenade, we could plant beautiful rows of trees, shaded walk, plenty of room for walking, biking, and, you know, a complete street. So it would look something like this. So this, whoops. So this would be the church side of Amherst with parallel parking and an alley of live oak trees that happens about every three or four spaces along Amherst, and then this alley of sycamores along the south side of Amherst, with widened sidewalks on both sides.
Scott, can you talk about the traffic flow?
Yeah, yeah, I will. So to do this, we're going to, let me skip forward a little bit. Just get backwards. So when we, when we place the angle parking on the north side of the church side, the north side of Amherst, to the south side of Milton, church side of Milton, we gain the most parking because of the lack of curb cuts that we'll have. It's very efficient. And we also create opportunities for drop-offs. What that means, though, is to get lane alignment with Amherst or Milton west of College, that we're going to have to reverse the one-way flow. So Amherst would now flow east, currently flows west. Milton would now flow west, currently flows east. It seems to work. And it seems like, you know, lane alignment west of College is obviously the right thing to do. So the people street is College. And within the 60-foot right-of-way of College, we can sort of put the road on a diet a little bit and have two 11-foot lanes, again, standard lane width, one northbound and one southbound. We can then introduce parallel parking and sort of designated parallel parking spaces adjacent to those two 11-foot lanes, and have a really generous 11 and 1/2 foot wide parkway, eight feet of which can be occupied by a very walkable, very bikeable sidewalk, 3 and 1/2 feet for planting and/or by the retention. So in axiometric, it would look something like this. You know, so right now, keep doing that. Yeah, okay. So right now, we have about a 26-foot-wide, more or less, street width, and then 17 feet on each side. So what we're basically suggesting is let's have one lane that's 11 feet wide in each direction, eight feet of parallel parking in designer maze off of that travelway, and then a very generous pedestrian environment. And the opportunity to preserve existing trees. So a new traffic and circulation diagram would look like this. Rice, College, Oden, University would remain two-way, as they are today. Amherst and Milton would be one-way, but the direction would just be full. And then we end up with a really beautiful hierarchy of walkways. So along each complete street, we'll have this sort of 12-foot-wide pedestrian promenade on the south side of Amherst and the north side of Milton. So and then on the parking side, we'll have a wonderful 8-foot-wide sidewalk. That 8-foot-wide sidewalk would continue along both sides of College, around the university, and then come up to the intersection here. The sidewalk would then narrow to 6 feet unless we obtained the easement from HISD, then it could widen. But it would be 6 feet. Today is 4 feet, so it'd be a little bit wider than today. So we end up with a pretty, pretty beautiful sort of circulation, walking, biking, jogging around the Civic Center, and very generous places for people along Milton and Amherst. So now I want to talk about the civic spaces. And we have sort of three notions that we want to share with you about this. And so what I mean by the civic spaces is how do we accomplish the first goal in the citizen survey? How do we arrange buildings, put up the community center, the senior center, and the library, in a way that results in a really memorable public open space? And so this one idea is called Westview Green. And this simple motion is that we're going to, whoops, yeah, that we're going to organize spaces so that we create sort of a green connection from Huffington Park through a Civic Center, through Westview Green, down to the church's youth center. It becomes one connected public open space. The water tank will remain in the near future. We think there's a wonderful opportunity to make that a piece of architecture, a piece of art, by simply doing a street around it and make it sort of a focal point of this public space. The community center and senior center as one, one-story building that live on the east side, buffered from the church and the water tank by planting. Milton would be a complete street with angle parking and a drop-off here, so people would come along and around, drop off and go that way. The library would be a two-story building on the west side of the Westview Green, and then there'd be a series of sort of sinuous walkways and public spaces that connect it to the church's youth center. And, you know, some of these spaces within the, in the green, could be beautiful activated spaces, sort of very sinuous form. It would look like this in axiometric. So here is Amherst as a complete street. There's Milton as a complete street now westbound. The drop-off at the community center, the community center and senior center. Another drop-off would happen here at the senior center and library, and then this one contiguous green space making a connection between Huffington Park and the church's youth center. That's number one. This is number two. Number two, we refer to as the commons. And the idea, again, is to sort of use architecture to define a great public space. And in this alternative, of course, the water tower remains and still is a wonderful piece of public art, we believe, or architecture, connected by, to Huffington Park. But the community center and senior center would front Amherst and maybe connected by a lobby, a transparent lobby, with a drop-off on Amherst. And then there would be this wonderful porch on the north side, sort of looking north to the library, which becomes sort of the keystone of this space. And, you know, this could be really beautiful. I mean, sitting here on the south side of the commons, in shade, looking north to the facade of the library, you know, luminous, something like, really beautiful. And then there would be a covered walk that continues the porch and defines the space. That covered walk would span Milton and come back again. And, you know, the covered walk would probably have to pop up at Milton for fire truck and other clearances, but that becomes a great opportunity for landmarking. So that the covered walks become a landmark as you're looking west on Milton or looking east on Milton. And then the library itself becomes sort of a landmark of the commons. There's a pump room that exists right here that we would love to relocate, that needs to be relocated. It would live here and basically feel like part of the architecture of the library. Then on the north side, there'd be some parking for the library, but also connected via crosswalks and things to the whole commons. And of course, Milton and Amherst both become complete streets, parking streets. So the commons would look like this in axiometric. So this is the community center, senior center, the porch and covered walk that links to the library and back again. There's a wonderful opportunity, we think, to do some outdoor activated social spaces on the north side of the community center that help support the space. The water tank becomes a great piece of civic architecture, and then parking on the north side of the library. So that's number two. So the third idea, and the last one, is the town square. And the town square sort of completes, or continues to transform Milton and Amherst into complete streets, but Milton would stop at this point, and it would terminate into the library. The library would become iconic. It would be the landmark that you see when you look east from, west from Oden and east from College. The library would then be connected to the community center and to the senior center. There would be a drop-off here and plaza, the town square, that basically terminates Milton and makes a connection to Huffington Park, with the water tower and its architecture as a focal point. This could be as simple as lawns, surrounding architecture, or in the center of architecture. Could be gardens, could be both. There would be a drop-off on the south side of the community center and senior center to service it, and then, of course, this drop-off at the library. The pump station, the pump building could be here, and there could be this beautiful courtyard that becomes an entrance or reading garden to the library from parking to the north, and perhaps a trellis, much like this image, that could define the space.
So you didn't talk about the parking. So can you talk about the, any parking?
Which parking?
The parking that connects Amherst and Milton.
Oh, yeah, sorry. So, yeah, so on the east side of the community center and library would be a new parking lot that would connect Rosen and Amherst, so circulation can travel that way.
Yeah, so while we're shutting down part of Milton, we're not shutting traffic. Traffic would flow through the parking lot, is basically this, we need to through.
Okay, so, yeah, so here's Milton and the parking lot that Jeff just mentioned connects to Amherst, and the senior center, or, I'm sorry, community center, senior center, two-story library. The pump building is here, and the water tank as a focal point to the town square, which connects to Huffington Park.
Okay, so, whoops, I got finished.
Yeah, there's two more. So these are the three solutions, just in comparison. I'll pick these back up in a moment. But we wanted to sort of go back to what we heard, the most important planned improvements, and how these schemes sort of relate to that. So, you know, consolidating new buildings to create green space, I think we've done that. More trees, for sure. More efficient parking, for sure. And I'll just mention that each one of these schemes results in an additional amount of public parking in the Civic Center area. And then definitely achieve traffic calming measures for the street's safety, enhances crosswalks for children, wider sidewalks, more grassy areas, more passive areas for relaxing and visiting, community gathering spaces, for sure. So we hope they are checked in the boxes.
So again, these are three ideas, or not. Anything that the city has agreed to do or not agreed to do, these are three big ideas that we're putting forward for conversation to see if the city has interest in creating space like this in the Civic Center. This is really the, how we kind of get there and get some feedback about whether or not that makes any sense or not. What we are going to do is pass out comment cards and pens. You'll see on the comment cards that there are some boxes at the top, so if your comment is about one of the schemes specifically, if you'll check that box so we know which scheme you're talking about. If you're talking about all three, you can check the box that says "all three." But we just want to make sure we understand what your commenting or questioning is about, and then we will gather those and we'll read those and try to answer as best we can. And so if you will do that, we'll collect those in a second. And then we are going to put on poster boards up here in a second, the three solutions, so if you want to take a closer look at those, you can do that as well. So we're going to give you a few minutes to do that, and then we'll come back, and then we'll start through any questions or comments. Okay, I'm going to go do these one at a time, and I will do my best to read the writing. You guys did really good the last time. Okay, so the first one is, says it's, it looks like it's some general comments, but also some specific ones. So the comment was that concept one, Westview Green, was my fave, with a smiley face. I think Westview is, is very generous with time and money. Obviously, less than 1% of our population cares about this. I would move forward on the council's choice and be done with it. Most people will be thrilled with whatever happens. Make a climbing wall around the water tower. Okay, the next one is, I heard you mention the library be a two-story. So again, let me go back. I know we had to show something specific here, but we've not decided the library is a two-story or one-story. We're just trying to show you what happens, obviously, if there's less square footage on the, on more first floor, that means there's less green space. Or if you want to have more green space, then having a two-story building is one way to accomplish that. So again, these are not specifics here. We are showing a two-story library, all three of these, but that doesn't mean that's what it will end up being. Okay, there was a lot of comments last time about building a two-story community center. As someone who participates in many activities, I think we need a second floor in the community center. I'd like to see more fruit trees than trees. I'd like to see all the facilities becoming as sustainable as possible. See Rice University. Sustainability's webpage as an example, sustainabilityrice.rice.edu. How about a community garden? See blue zones for ideas. The next one is check general comment. Holding these meetings while better and more sensible, half our way at their summer homes is unfair. September, a much better choice with a 25-year time scale. The next one is general comments. The pork farm ditch walkway is an expiationary success. Before beginning rebuild around City Hall, add many more long pork farm-style walkways that connect to this, to several existing parks. The next one has concept three, the town square, and the general comment checked. But the first comment, I think, is about number three. I like the idea of continuous community center slash library. What is your plan for pedestrian traffic down Milton towards Huffington Park? I assume that means in idea three. So I think we can, can we put up idea three? So maybe the plan would be better? So I think that, you know, we, we could either have, in this, again, the buildings aren't defined yet. Maybe there's a gap in the buildings there. Or maybe there's a lobby for the building that people transgress through. Or we find a way to walk around that way where we, we have people use our new walkable streets and come down and use Amherst. Again, but those are all, this is good feedback for us to understand what your, what your thoughts are on these, on these different schemes. Why do we need more parking if the aim is to increase pedestrians' leg bike traffic? Do you want to pick that?
You know, we think we can do both. We think we can increase pedestrian comfort and walkability and likability and increase parking. So we think we can do both.
The next question is, what are your projections for shifting traffic flow around the affected streets? So I would say before we go anywhere to changing traffic flow, there needs to be a traffic study done. We have not done that. This is the beginnings of a big idea that we want to see if it makes sense. If it turns out that it, it needs further investigation, then we would do all of the appropriate analysis to be able to decide if it passes that threshold. Also, there's a cost associated with all of that. So again, these are just big ideas. We're trying to get feedback to see which ones get traction that we might want to go forward with or which ones are, you know, we leave, leave behind and don't talk about yet. I, and then I assume there will be more traffic towards other unaffected streets. Yeah, the traffic study would help us understand that. But again, we're, that would all be studied by a traffic consultant. The next one is check concept one, but I think the comment is about concept three. I don't like the termination of Milton in number three. The next one is check general comment. Love the complete streets. I'd like to see more specifics on what it entails. Do the designs change the square footage of the library? So again, as I keep trying to say is that the buildings are not, we're not showing building solutions here. The, the working assumption is that the square footage of the library in any scheme we pick will be the same. And the same thing with the, the same as what we were planning to do, not the same as what it is existing. Same with the other two buildings too. We would, that that is, would be the same in any scheme that we would figure out a way to make that work. The next one. Okay, this one, I'll let Scott answer. So I think it's a general comment. Question, people, bike and traffic congestion, how do you separate?
Is there, does it say on a complete street or just in general?
No, it just, it's, I think it's a general comment.
Is that better? Let me go to the right. You know, so for instance, on a complete street, if we were to plant sidewalks with a parallel parking, they would be in curb sidewalks, right? So those curbs would define where cars are and where people are or parking would be. We think, no, I keep doing that. We think that on the opposite side of the street, it could be curbless. And it's trees and lights and furniture that people enjoy and use that define path of travel. And that was a comment that I know came out months and it's something we can always explore further, whether a curb is the right thing to do or not. One thing that's good about being curbless is the street is totally accessible from one side to the other. And if you ever want to close the street or manage it for public events, people aren't creeping over curbs and things. It all, it all feels like one plaza, right? But, but it's a very real comment that we all have studied.
When you say curbless, is it kind of like at Lenny Park, between the park and their building? How it's all flush?
That, that's a great example.
Okay, the next one is a general comment and I'm struggling with this one a little bit. Make more explicit the connection between features offered by each concept and the kind of community we aspire to be. How does each concept contribute to share our community? And I'm not sure what that word is.
I think it's a great comment. And I think the idea or the, the point was that if we can sort of distill the attributes of each option relative to the citizen's survey, it's a helpful decision to make. I think that's great. Did I capture that?
The next one is Scott, three boxes checked. Concept one, West U Green, concept three, Town Hall, and then general comment. Please think about EV charging in the parking schemes. One in three concepts are the most interesting. Do we need so much parking generally, question mark? At least eight-foot sidewalks, please. Race crosswalks possible.
Do we need parking? I, you know, I think we're adding, we will be adding more built space within the civic center. That is going to require a slight increase in the parking demand, not, not a lot. It seems achievable.
Okay, the next one is a general comment. Why does the library and community center need to be two separate buildings? So it does not and we don't, and we don't know if it will be yet or not. Again, we haven't started that analysis. We're still working on the programming of the building based on our last Town Hall meeting. We will then turn that into basically some basic studies about what happens with, we did one-story or two-story or one building or two-story or three buildings, working around some of these big ideas, if any of these, you know, make it past the council. The next is why can't the core audience have a more intergenerational emphasis? I'm not sure what that means. Oh, focus here on seniors. Okay. So you know, how about that urban planning could be more focused on seniors? Okay, well, I would, I mean, I would offer and I'll let you answer. But I think anytime you make a walk space safer, more shade, with more beautiful, I think it's, you know, children benefit a lot from it, but I think seniors are right there with them in terms of, you know, the benefit, you know, whether it be, you know, families walking down the street. We have two kids and each, one in each arm and the sidewalk's not big enough for you to walk, you know, side by side. Versus if you're walking with, with the seniors, you maybe have a motorized scooter. Anytime that we make a space more pedestrian-friendly, I think all generations benefit from that.
That's a great.
And then the last one is why can't parking in streets be far removed from spaces minus the handicap?
I'm going to explain what far removed.
I think, I think it's, could there be a remote parking lot away from the buildings other than the handicap spaces? From urban planning, can you, once you answer, conceptually?
You know, doing civic spaces, it's important that they're activated, right? If they're hidden or if they're unaccessible or if people don't experience them on a regular basis, they can become empty, right? So I think, I think making it convenient for people to use and enjoy the space, convenient to use and enjoy a facility only promotes the use of the space, of the civic center. So, you know, I think if you're, if you're working on a college campus and there's lots of people living on the college and they're right there and the campus isn't active and you want to park them away, it makes a lot of sense. But here, I think the friction is a good thing, you know, having activity is a good thing.
Okay, the next one is Scott, general comment checked. Making Amherst and Milton curbless would greatly increase the risk of auto pedestrian collisions. It's not necessary. And then comment two is I like the commons proposal the best. So do you want to talk about, and again, I would just say that whether, I mean, he's showing curbless as an idea, that doesn't mean that will be the idea that gets, if we do anything, that doesn't mean that's what will happen. So I'm just exploring an idea, what would happen if you used a curbless approach, right?
Exactly. And the idea with a complete street is that it's really not a street. It's really a, it's really a space for people. It's a, it's like a plaza that you can drive through. If things are scaled down and there's parking on one side and trees and lights and, and it's pavers or some other materiality variations, people slow down, you know, the, the traffic slows down. Trees and lights and other things, very good tools, bollards, very good tools to sort of define that color without a curb. But there's nothing wrong with, if you need a curb, it's all about that.
Okay, the next one has concept two checked. Have you considered blocking Milton? Don't like having to cross street to library.
Yeah, we did, we did think about that and our concern was that, well, not concern, but, you know, we think if people drive through the space and see it on a regular basis and can park near it on a regular basis, again, it sort of activates the space where there's eyes on the space. If, if we didn't extend Milton through, I would be a little bit concerned that the space would feel empty. People wouldn't indeed as much as if Milton goes through. You know, on the south side, Amherst, I mean, if this is the architectural arrangement and there's a way to do a lobby that's transparent and you can see through the lawn, that would be really beautiful. But you're not directly connected still, which is why we thought, well, maybe we should extend Milton through. So you're driving through the commons, you're not just looking at it from the edges.
You know, I'm going to go down the direction, going to go to the library and street.
Yeah, or if there's something really cool happening on the lawn, maybe do a park and drop and like, movie night.
I think it would be a good place. I think it's a great concept to do.
Again, if you want more comment cards while I'm going through this, just raise your hand and we'll bring some more to you as we're going through here. I still got, I still have several to go through here. Okay, the next one has concept three boxed, checkbox. Please define the traffic flow of option three. I assume Milton and Amherst still stay one-way streets.
That's correct, yes. So in all three schemes, I see through Milton is westbound. And there's a roundabout here that would terminate at the library. But as Jeff mentioned, you could then just simply turn left to go through parking and come back to Amherst and make that shift very easily. So that, that is the case, that's the idea.
And I want to emphasize what Scott said during the presentation, because I had other people mention this to me. The reason that these schemes reverse the traffic flow is that we were able to achieve more parking on the street, doing that because of the number of existing driveways. That may not be the priority. If, if the city decides they want to do it, but they don't want, they don't care if we have five left parking spaces, we don't need to reverse the traffic and make these ideas work. So it was just really an idea about, hey, we, we're trying to expand the mindset with these ideas. We may come back to reality, you know, once we get through this. But we wanted to look at bigger ideas so that, and hopefully all of these ideas made you think differently about what is possible. Now, you may say, I don't want any of this. That's fine. But we wanted, we wanted to help expand the perspective of the community to see if, because if you're going to do something more radical like this, now's the time to do it. Because if you don't do it now, you're not doing it in your kid's lifetime.
And just to build upon that a little bit, the other reason for reversing the one-way direction is lane alignment. So if you're traveling eastbound or, sorry, if you're traveling westbound on Milton, I'm going to use this one, westbound on Milton, that lane would align with the lane on Milton, west of college. If the, if the angle parking was on the opposite side of Milton, people would be driving over here and we'd have a very awkward condition where westbound traffic would be running through this. So that, the lane alignment was the other.
Okay, the next question is Scott, a general comment checked. Regarding the curbless streets, how do you differentiate pedestrian walking area to keep people, especially children, out of the way of cars?
As I mentioned before, it looks like bollards, trees, lights do, can do a great job of defining what's a pedestrian space and what's a good place. A curb is not going to keep a toddler from running out of the street. Vertical things do a great job of defining the street, both to pedestrians and to law owners.
Okay, the next one is Scott, general comments checked. And it says for all three plans, will there be bike racks? And I can think I can answer that one. I would assume if we're going to make it more bikeable, anytime you're doing this, that having more bike racks would make sense to go along with that. Especially at some of these facilities, if you're trying to promote people to bike to them, that you would want to have a place for them to put their bikes in an orderly fashion. Are there, the second question, or second comment is, are there plenty of ways for the outdoor spaces to be shaded or have fans? And drinking fountains for walkers, bikers and runners? So I think our working assumption, although we didn't show, we didn't show a lot, but we know these spaces need shade to be activated. But if we showed shade, you wouldn't be able to understand what the scheme is. So, you know, get to the big idea and then we figure out how to make it, the details of that.
Exactly. And, and you know, the design of these public spaces is, is the next step and that we all look forward to taking. What, what happens within the commons and the scheme number two, can't wait to figure that out. Safety of the buildings, there's all of that would be a grasp. And just to build upon the bike thing, we also ought to have the e-bike charging stations, just like for cars.
Okay, the next one is a general comment. Why did you not present solutions that incorporated City Hall discussion from the June Why did you not present solutions that incorporated in City Call discussion from the June 4th Why aren't we discussing renovations? So again, this is really about the urban planning. I know there was a council meeting about other things that hasn't been incorporated into our, we were working on this path currently. The next one is are bioretention planters open like ditches? Is this going to create ditches like the one, like one sees in the Heights and Rice Military?
Uh, no. I think a somewhat good model for what we're referencing as a bioretention planter is along Bagby Street in downtown. Those bioretention planters, if they're all brought off, filter it, treat it, hold it, they're deep because the pipes are very deep in that area, these wouldn't be that deep. But it's a, it's a pretty good model. I'm going to see a good chance.
Okay, the next one, I think, is a general comment. Why are you removing green space from easements to increase sideways, sidewalk width? This is echoing the very sad trend in our city of less green space on residential sites. Curvious concrete is not a real substitute for grass.
Yeah, I think the references to Holland and the idea of capturing an easement uptight need to be able to widen the lanes, and I'm for it.
The next one is related to, she's got all three, the concept box checked. Has West U Baptist signed off on changing traffic flow and parking along their perimeter? They are seeing this for the first time today, just like you, so the conversations haven't even begun outside of this room. So these are the first time anyone's seen these schemes.
Let me just add, Jeff, that Bill brought up a very good point that we ought to consider, which is, and Bill, I think you were talking about drop-off on Amherst, but, you know, we need to think about how, if Amherst is eastbound, how we allow drop-off to turn around and, and kind of, which of the commission would be eastbound? So people are dropping kids off on the right side of the car. I think it's doable, given the space that we have, but it would be very important.
The next one has concept one, two, and three checked, and the question is how much time is PGA L spent on these sites? Have you observed the drop-off and pickup routes for the very active preschool and church youth all week? I will say that I have been working over here and been in this community on a regular basis for 25 years, almost every day of the week, every different season, so I've been here struggling to find a parking space, just like you guys do. I see the traffic that goes back and forth all the time, I've seen it a lot, and I've seen it for 25 years. One is, who are the drop-off areas circular drives intended for? So I think I can answer that. So we know that a very important component of a successful senior center is to have a drop-off that is different than the one you have here, which is you walk out into the street to get on to a bus to go somewhere that's not protected from the elements. So senior and just community center design that happens all over the place is to have a drop-off, that has a covered drop-off so that the seniors can get to the, without slipping, they'll do it in a safe way. And so for sure, one of the drop-offs is intended to be associated with the senior community center function. I think Scott is showing some other ones. Obviously, there's some existing church drop-offs that we have to be considering in all of these schemes as well. And so again, these are just big ideas, but that's what the intention is. This one is, I think, a general comment. Why is the senior center separated from the community center? So we are showing them in these schemes as one color, because, I mean, you have two, we have a building in addition here that one was called a community building, one's called a senior center. We've kept those labels until the city decides how we'll rebrand the facility, whether or not you're going to change the name of it to something different, or change it to one of those, or is it the same? We don't know that. But our working assumption is, you see that in all of these cases, those two functions are the same color. We're, we're looking at those from a programming perspective as one element, and so I would expect those two would be connected. That may not be true, but that's my working assumption right now, and whether or not the library is attached or not, we don't know that yet either, so we're kind of showing both conditions here. The next one is general comment, and then written in, none of the above. All three concepts contemplate moving the fire station. The community has requested a concept where the fire station isn't moved, community center should be staying facing out in light, and can, library can face Milton with green space in between parking behind church. The next one is general comment, again, checked, none of the above. All these concepts are based on a survey of ass based on 10% of the community, which is not a representation of the city. The next one has concept two and concept three checked. What is the expected usage between the community center and this versus the senior center? Again, I would say that we don't know that yet. We're, we're still working on programming to determine what the spaces need to be. We should have something to bring forth in the next couple of months about related to that. We're studying that right now, we're gathering from the survey we did, the usage of the facility, so we're, we're in the process of pulling all that together right now, and should have that in the next, you know, couple of months for sure. The next one is concept two checked. Separate library building so seniors, senior staff isn't abusing seniors in the library. Okay, the next one is concept two. Fine to block Milton. Need a bit of parking next to senior center. Thank walkers, people in a boot. Love covered walkway. Porch is awesome. Allow most green views from buildings. I'm not sure what that says. The next is a general comment. What does this cost? Meaning the urban planning concepts, we don't know yet. Presumably, if we get through this, that we'll be asked to put a number out there for, before council would consider what is it's going to cost. We haven't done any of that yet, we're still, we're still pulling the other ideas.
Sort of you could give a comparison of one, two, or three, maybe, a comparative, okay, and it should be a comparable cost estimate.
So the question was, would we do a cost estimate for all three? I think we'll, we'll know more after we get through the council meeting next Monday about what council's interested in pursuing, if any.
Would you say one is significantly more than three?
I wouldn't venture that guess right now, but if they ask us to do that, that's exactly what we'll do. The next comment here is the brick pavers are awful to roll across for roller skates. Consider at least having a path of smooth surface.
That's a good idea.
The next one has concept two checked and concept, or the concept two question is the comments. Concerned about distance from parking for senior center, would like to see a porch also facing pedestrian walkway, so senior activity is more visible to community. I like the architectural font here, that I can read this. And then concept three, comment is, how do pedestrians get through library to town square? And could Milton become pedestrian-only access to church parking from Rice Boulevard? You want to take that?
Yeah, the answer is yes. Back to the question about parking near the senior center, if there is angle parking on Amherst, really, the parking would be very convenient to the senior center, all three schemes.
The next is Scott, concept three checked, and then general comment. My concern is any construct will make my property look more accessible, so I have security concern. Do you want to take that?
I, I think that was about the idea of having parking on the south side of the residences that front Rice, and this becoming a more publicly accessible space.
The next one is a general comment. If this was your neighborhood, would you support any of these concepts? And if so, which one? So the which one, I don't know yet, but I think all of these are very interesting ideas. I think they're interesting about how you change the, the context of your community, civic center area. The question is, do you want to have some idea like that? The next one is, box two is checked, but it, the comment looks like it's about all of them. I love how all the buildings are centered around green space. It is also, it also really embraces intergenerational feel. I would like to fully combine the senior center and the community center, they should not be separate. The next one is got concept three checked. I like how the library is closer to everything. The next one is a general comment. No need to read? Okay. It says I don't need to read this out loud, so you don't want me, don't want me to?
I decided I had an opposing opinion, I didn't want to start a fight.
That's okay, I'll read it out loud. I love the curbless design for complete streets and think West U should implement it also on Edlow between University and Rice. The next one doesn't have any boxes checked. Is this a bigger priority over establishing our own power source to be off of ERCOT? Having stable water source has been great, notwithstanding the question, I have no idea the cost of it. The next one is a general comment checked. I am in favor of reversing flow of traffic on Amherst and Milton. I think parking on the side of the service, sorry, senior slash community center are pedestrian safe and most convenient, leading to more better usage. The next one is a general comment. Could you expand on your plans for intersections? So one is, we, we don't have many specific plans, we're just sharing ideas about if we could make them more pedestrian friendly, we think that would be a good thing.
That's a good way to summarize it. If nothing else, it would be wonderful if they were paved with intersection, I think, because it does slow down traffic. And when you crosswalks with my materials differently than the street itself, much like happens at University and, and whatnot. You could take that to the next level and say, let's make it a speed table, let's lift the intersection up to the sidewalk elevation, and, you know, gently slope up to a speed table, that is a great traffic problem measure. All things will be explored as we, as we move.
And the second comment I hear is I would also like to echo the earlier comment requesting at least summaries crosswalks. Okay, so the next one is related to concept three. Please explain how pickup drop-off, drop-off for the church preschool works? Will traffic be routed through the senior center parking lot?
The preschool is along Amherst?
No, it's concept three, concept three was the question.
So, so as Bill had pointed out, if we have traffic flowing east on Amherst, people would have to come in here, turn, so that the kids are facing our building and drop off, and then make that turn and, and leave. I think that's possible, because this is a, it's very wide, and because we're putting angle parking on that side of the street, there's a gap that we're capturing, run that.
And I would also say, these are big ideas, that every single thing isn't worked out or figured out, so there's lots of things that we still need to work on to make these real, right? What do we have to do to save our retreat? What do we have to do to, you know, there's lots of details that may influence how these things really end up if the decision is to go forward. Okay, so I have read all of the comments that I got. Are these on the city website? They are not, yet. Sounds like they will be tomorrow, and we made these boards, I don't know, just they'll put these in the lobby of the city hall? The question is, is there a common place on the website that we go looking for? I'm one of my favorites.
So if you just go to washington.gov/fnp, and then you click on phase two, it'll be there. So it'll be up by the end of the day tomorrow, and then these boards will be over here at senior services for, to look at.
Okay, yes, sir.
Does it work if you give us options, okay? For the next phase of this, or the next decision-making is the council, and they just vote on one of the three, or about?
We're going to present these to city council, they will decide what they do with that, right? They could do anything they want to do with that, but we're going to, we're going to take, and we don't have a lot of time.
Present them to the council meeting?
There's a council workshop on Monday night where we're going to present these versions. We may have time to make some tweaks based on this meeting. Probably, it's not a lot of time, but we'll do, maybe, but, but at least these will be presented to city council in the workshop, and then maybe, the, the, the city council workshop may be here, right, or over there, is I prepared that?
It's backup here.
Okay, so it'll be here on Monday night?
No, it's a backup. It depends on how proud they think it might be.
Okay, so how do they figure that out? Where's they?
Hold on, I'll, I'll...
So people can kind of do workshops? Yes.
Yes.
So you can show us if it'll be here.
Okay, so the decision is it's going to be here Monday night, and the time is?
So, so council has a regular meeting at 6:30, they'll adjourn, and then they'll walk over here, and we'll do the workshop here, because we still don't know how many people will show up. So it'll be here. We'll, we're going to live for seven o'clock, but it might be 7:15, but they cannot start sooner than that, so.
Okay, so just so they're not confused, there's going to be a piece over there for regular business, and, but the piece, if you want to see the workshop of this, it's going to be here no matter what.
Correct.
All right, I don't see more hands, so again, thank you for your participation. We are taking all of these comments seriously. We will be, obviously, sharing all of this with the city and city council, and we're going to do our best to make sure this works with whatever feedback we get from the community. Thank you.
Thank you.